Council, we'll call the meeting order for the record. It is September 27, 2022 at 4:30 PM. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Burton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Yes.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
Next item up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
For our agenda this evening, we are going to pull item number 32, the Housing Assistance Grant Program recommendations. Just some more information needed on some things that just came to light today. So we're pulling item number 32. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of the agenda as amended.
Second.
Have a motion second to adopt the agenda as amended. Is there a discussion? If not, in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted as amended. Next item up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move approval of the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
Have a motion second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. So we will move right into department commission reports. Council, the first item up is resolution number 22-23-45, a resolution appointing members, youth members to our commissions. Like, like many years when you go out and solicit people to serve, sometimes it seems like they all want to go on the same one. Sometimes, you know, it's kind of hard. And I think this year was one of those years where we did have some, you know, a lot of interest in similar commissions, but ultimately I think it works out pretty well based upon some of the conversations that were had with the applicants and some of their interests. So first and foremost, you have a reappointment for John Keller to continue to serve on HBC. Second up, we have Hannah Scoville. Hannah is a musician, and the panel was impressed by her storytelling capabilities and her desire to stay up into all forms of expression. So she is recommended for the Arts Commission. Next up is James Lucky. You may recognize the Lucky name. We've had Lucky serve on a commission before. It's just a brother, and he expressed interest in a couple, but ultimately SWAC, you know, he's really was, he was open to wherever his talents could be utilized best and to learn about city operations. And so SWAC was the recommendation from there. Another one was Huiyung Song, and ultimately it was a recommendation for the Transportation Commission. He had an interest and open to learning about all things, but he was really interested in mass transit and how the Marine handles their program and issues related to that. So we thought that that might be a great way. And we have a new line that's coming online, a new bus line starting up this week. I imagine part of what they're going to be doing is looking, keeping an eye on that over this next year. So it'd be good to have the youth perspective on that as we look at its future. And then our last one, who's the one here in the audience today, Elliot Hood or Ellie. She, you all may be familiar with her family, and if you have not met Ellie before, she's a great individual. And the recommendation was for her to go on, onto the parks. Why arts was what perhaps she was most interested in? There's a lot of arts in parks, and that's, I think, a good connection that can be made, but ultimately, you know, we have the director sent away right there that I know will value her inputs from that regard. So council, that is the recommendation that's before you. And either myself or Mr. Miles are happy to answer any questions you may have. Okay, Councilman Hoagland.
Mayor, it sounds like a great group and appreciate you doing this. I would move approval of resolution number 22-2345, appointing Hannah Scoville to the Marine Arts Commission, James Lucky to the Marine Solid Waste Advisory Commission, Huiyung Song to the Marine Transportation Commission, and Elliot, Ellie Hood to the Parks Recreation Committee Commission, and reappointing John Keller to the Marine Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
Have a motion second. Is there discussion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Burton.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries. I'm agreed to. We, since we do have one person present, Ellie, would you like to come up and make any comments? Okay, she'll, she's going to save them for her openings at the Parks and Rec Commission in that standpoint. So thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I just want to dovetail on that a little bit. Ellie, thanks for being here and for taking the time to serve. The work that you're doing on the commission is really important. It plays a big role in helping us make good decisions for the parks long term. It'll have a lasting impact on the families and folks that live in our community, young and old. So there's lots of things you can do with your time, and you're going to give a little bit to the city, and we really appreciate it. So and coming here today to be appointed, we appreciate that too. So welcome aboard.
Thank you, Councilman Borton. Okay. With that, we will move on to item 30, which is from our Public Works Department and request for Kimberly Grove for connection to sewer, city sewer services. And I will turn this over to Ms. Raddick.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this is a request from Kimberly Grove for connection to city sewer services outside the city limits at 2727 East Magic View Drive. I put a map up on the screen showing you where that is. We are proceeding with, with this request according to the, the code that was recently revised for a parcel that wants to hook up to either city water or sewer and does not want to develop. It's hooking up for a, I think the term is an exigent circumstance. In this particular circumstance, the, the septic system for the property has failed. They want to take this opportunity to hook up to city sewer services, and our, our code directs us to work with the property owner and agree and pursue an agreement where they would hook up to city water and city sewer and annex if those things are available. In this case, the annexation and this, and the water service are also available. So that's what we are recommending in this situation. The property owner is not available to come and talk to you today. However, her contractor, who is representing her, is available to answer any questions you might have about the situation. So with that, I would turn it over to you for any questions you have.
Thank you. Kyle, council, questions for Sir Raddick, or would you like to hear any comments from the contractor? Councilman Cavanagh.
And this is, I think, maybe where my confusion lies. They want to connect the services but not annex in, or they want annex in and take services, obviously, as well?
Mr. Mayor, Member, Member Cavanagh, they are in full agreement of taking water in addition to sewer and annexing. But they are not proposing any development of their property.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
There's a question for you, for Mr. Neri. It seems, wouldn't they just come in for an annexation then into the city as opposed to this request for services and an annexation? This, maybe I'm missing a step here.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, so the, I guess the, the question here, we, if you recall, we passed an order a while back for this very narrow circumstance when they're wanting services. And we had a recent discussion with a property on Highway 69 that the council direction in that one was no, no service about annexing because you're already annexable. I mean, this situation, again, the subject system has failed, so they don't have any working services currently, although the contractor probably answered that. I don't recall if someone's living in the house. And I guess that'd be the whole question. If no one's living there, then they could certainly begin the development process. We would have to figure out a zone. It'd probably be an R2 zone or something like that. But yeah, I think the concerns, I think, I've talked with planning about are the future needs. But again, there's not a logic to putting in a sidewalk right now. There's not a lot of logic without more development of this, but they are wanting the services.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
As part of this type of request, would we be, would we need to commit to what that future, that it would be, they consent to annex, that we would state now, they should at least initially apply as an R2, kind of like almost a holding zone?
Yes, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, board, I believe, I don't have the agreement in front of me. Ms. Kane from my office prepares these agreements. I think she wrote 60 days to begin the application process. So really, the intent of these, of this type of application is get the services hooked up and then begin the process of annexing behind it versus in front of it, just so the house has service.
Council, any additional questions? And I, there's no, because the actual process, do we need to do a motion or anything before? Or will the agreement set that in place, followed by the annexation after that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think the direction we just need today is can they move forward? And then the agreement will have to get signed. You'll have approval of that, and then everything else will fall after that. Am I missing something, Kyle?
Yeah, that's my understanding is this, this, you were asking council for approval to move forward with an agreement.
And then council board.
With that, I move that we approve the request for the connection to city sewer services outside city limits as presented in today's hearing, understanding that a written agreement with the terms and specifics will be brought back for council approval.
Have a motion second. Is there any discussion? If not, in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and the item is agreed to. Thank you, Kyle. Next up is Human Resources Department for recommend changes to city standard operating policy 2.8. Turn this over to Mrs. Ritchie. And.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you, Mayor. A memo was provided to you on behalf of the police department. We are requesting that we make a change to procedures 2.8 and the policy for introductory period of employment. Currently, the CSOs have a one-year, excuse me, a six-month introductory period of employment with the training that comes along with that position. Once the employee has moved through the training process, it really only leaves the department approximately two months to really evaluate the CSO in the position to determine whether or not it's a good job fit, suitable for the position. They've received the training that they need. So the department has asked to shift that from a six-month introductory period of employment to 12 months. I'm here to answer any questions you have in regards to the process change, and I've asked Captain Coliani to join me in case you have any operational questions.
Thank you. Captain?
Just, just, just to kind of follow up and build off of that. So for those that you were here in 2019, we went to a community service officer program internally. And what that was, was a professional non-swarm position that is attached to the patrol division. And they take a lot of the priority ones, property damage accidents, the lower level stuff that allows the officers to handle the priority calls, the priority twos and threes. What that does for us is we can generally fill these positions quicker. They're cheaper to train, and they're cheaper to deploy. Police officers are expensive, and this program has been a wild success. I think we're up to six of them now, and we can imagine going without them. Having said all that, there is a lot of training and equipment that goes into these positions, and it takes almost five months to train a fully equipped CSO into the position, which leaves us very little time to review their ability to do the job at the minimal acceptable standards that we'd want. And so what we're asking is to move it from six months to a year. That gives us more time to evaluate if they're a good fit in the position for that slot. And it will also allow us to grow these, these applicants further into their career. We've had two or three of them leave the CSO and become police officers. So as they grow and do that, that's kind of a built-in application process for us for police officer positions as they come open. We're hiring people within, so that's a good thing, too. So that's all we're looking at doing. By the time they go through all their training, we just need a little bit more time to evaluate that they're the right fit for them.
Captain, I assume that this would apply to new? Is it, it's not retroactive for anyone that's been currently hired?
Mayor, great question. No. So we would, if you approve this tonight, we'll change the job description. And then next time we post it, it will apply to those new people coming through the processes. It's not retroactive. The people that were hired are currently hired under this job description in the six months.
Thank you. Council, any additional questions for?
Mr. Mayor. Just one more add. So this list is listed as an action item. There is a resolution attached to your agenda with the, with the proposed changed policy. So if the council have the mindset, you can approve it tonight if you wish, or if you want to put it on a future meeting, that's your, whichever you desire.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Council, any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Do I have a preferred action from council? Is it attached? It's not, it's not listed on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, it's not listed on the agenda, but the attachment is in, on the agenda that's online. So it is, it has been publicly noticed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, I've got the agenda. It is online. However, I don't have a number on that, 22 dash, and then that is blank. So.
Mr. Mayor, I can assign a number right now if we would like to.
You have a preference?
Yeah, I, I think we can move forward with this. It's, it was pretty straightforward. I think we're in agreement with it. So I don't have any issues unless council member does want to wait, but I, I think we can move forward with a number.
Mr. Clerk, what's our number?
Mr. Mayor, that number's going to be 22-2346.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move to approve a city resolution number 22-2346 to change the standard operating policy 2.8, which is the introductory period of employment. So.
Have a motion second. Is there any discussion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Burton. Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries, and item 22-2346 is approved. Thank you very much. Item 32 was removed from the agenda, so we're on to item 33.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move that we go into executive session for Idaho Code 74-2061F.
Have a motion second. Is there discussion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Burton. Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Borton. Hoagland.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries, and we will move to executive session.
Council, we'll call the meeting to order for the record is September 27, 2022 at 6:01 PM. We will begin tonight's regular city council meeting with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burne, Councilwoman Perrow, Councilman Cavanagh, Councilman Borden, Councilman Hoagland, Mayor Simison.
Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Next item is the community invocation, which will be delivered by Randy Rose with Research Church. If you would all please join us in the community invocation or take this as a moment of silent reflection.
Thank you, Mayor, for this privilege of being here. Lord, we thank you tonight for this meeting. We praise you for your great love for this whole community. And, Lord, we pray for wisdom for every decision that is made, that all of those decisions would be made with righteousness, with purity, and with the good of this entire community in mind. And we know that's the intent of every one of these council members. So we thank you for them, Lord, and we pray your blessing on this time in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move adoption of the agenda as published.
I have a motion of second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. You guys have it, and the agenda is adopted. Mr. Quirk, we have anyone standing up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, then we will move into tonight's action items. First up is item one, public hearing for Resolution 22-2343. I will open this public hearing with comments from Mr. Perser.
Mayor, council, appreciate letting me be here today. I start off with just want to tell our city clerk and our city attorney, thank you for their help in getting this noticed and work on the resolution and everything that's before you that we're able to be here today. The changes we're making today are pretty simple. When you break them down, they seem like a lot in number. We have 135 total changes. 129 of those are really are from our Public Works Department. There are water meter fees, water meter replacement type of things. Those fees reflect the cost changes that we are seeing and simply adjusting our fees to meet the pass-through costs going on to whoever may order, you know, the meter, the pipe, or whatever it is that they're seeking to get. Beyond those 129 fees, that leaves, you know, six. Two of those are removals. There's a dog removal, and we're getting rid of a CD or DVD. Don't give people CDs or DVDs anymore typically with public work, public, you know, information requests. We're getting rid of that. And then we have four relatively new fees related to animal control, addressing dogs, vicious dogs, livestock, and a cat. And we've gone through, you know, what's behind charging those fees, but in summation, that is really what is in front of you. The vast majority are passed through and were are addressing animal control. With that, answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Council questions for Brad. All right. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Mr. Quirk, if anyone wants to send my testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Is there anybody present that would like to come forward at this time and provide public testimony on this item? And if you're online, you can use the raise your hand feature. We just have one staff member, so hopefully, Mr. Raddick is listening because a lot of these impact their department, but if not, a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I move that we close the public hearing for Resolution 22-2343.
Second motion.
I have a motion of second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. You guys have it. The public hearing is closed. Next up is item two, which is Resolution 22-2343.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Looking for a motion, correct?
Yes.
I move that we approve Resolution 22-2343, a resolution adopting new and increasing fees, authorizing city departments to collect such fees and providing an effective date.
Second the motion.
I have a motion of second to approve Resolution 22-2343. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Burne, Perrow, Cavanagh.
Aye.
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 All ayes, motion carries, and the resolution is agreed to. Thank you very much. Next item up is item three, public hearing for Prescott Ridge Residential H 2022-0058. We will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before we get into the land use applications, I just want to introduce all of you to our newest associate planner, Stacy Hirsch. She's not new to our department. She's been with the city for over seven years, but she's been working as an assistant city planner for the last three and a half years. So we're happy to have her aboard, and we're looking forward to her bringing forward high-quality products to you. So if you don't know Stacy, she's here, and we thank you for all that you do, and we're happy to have her aboard.
Thank you, Bill, and welcome, Stacy. Look forward to seeing you on Tuesday nights. With that, turn this over to Sonya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, give me just a moment here. All righty, the first land use application before you tonight is a request for a development agreement modification. This site is zoned R8 and R15 and is generally located on the east side of North McDermott Road, south of West Chinon Boulevard. This property was annexed in 2021 with the requirement of a development agreement as part of the Prescott Ridge subdivision. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is medium-density residential. The applicant is proposing to modify the existing agreement for the residential portion of the Prescott Ridge subdivision to update the phasing plan for the development. Since the time of annexation, the phasing plan for the overall development has changed. The northern 15-acre medical campus portion of the site was shown on the phasing plan as phase one in order to create a legal lot to convey the purchaser of that property. Acquiring the out parcel at the northeast corner of the medical campus enabled the applicant to do a property boundary adjustment to create a legal lot for development purposes to convey to the new owner so that they can develop their site separately and at their own timing. The proposed modification will remove the medical campus from the phasing plan of the residential development. Other changes to the phasing plan include the following. Phase one was expanded to include the location of the pressurized irrigation pump house. The large green space in the center of the development is now part of phase three instead of phase six, which will allow the large park and associated amenities to develop sooner. And the updated phasing plan shows larger phases overall to expedite the development process. Phase one still includes construction of the collector's street, rustic oak, from Chinon Boulevard to the southern boundary of the property, which is important for emergency access and connectivity. No changes to the text of the development agreement are proposed. Patrick Connor, the applicant's representative, submitted written testimony. He is in agreement with the staff report. Staff is recommending approval of the request. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonya. Council, any questions for staff? Seeing that is the applicant here. Say your name and address for the record. We recognize for up to 15 minutes if you'd like.
Thank you. My name is Patrick Connor. Address is 701 South Allen Street, Meridian, Idaho. I think Sonya did a great job explaining it. This is a development modification for many in the phasing plan. We're able to make the 15-acre hospital portion of it a legal lot, and that it's now separate ownership. They're submitting their own CUP and development agreement modification for the phasing plan and their development agreement here in a few weeks, I believe. So as she said, a lot of the phasing has changed. The phase one got larger to include the pump station. And then just generally, we're making the phases a little bit larger to account for the increased time for review time and construction time. So it's a pretty straightforward request. I stand for any questions you guys have.
Thank you. Council, any questions for the applicant? Okay, appreciate very much. I'll ask if there's anybody that'd like to provide public testimony on this item. Again, we have nobody in the room and just staff online. So Kyle, if you'd like to provide testimony, please raise your hand. See no one coming forward or raising their hand. Would the applicant like to make any final comments? Applicant has waved. Any final comments? So council, do I have any motions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I move that we close the public hearing for Prescott Ridge Residential H 2022-0058.
I have a motion of second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. You guys have it. The public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I'll be the motion maker tonight. I'm good with that. I move that we approve application H 2022-0058, a development agreement modification to the existing development agreement for the residential portion of Prescott Ridge subdivision to update the phasing plan.
I have a motion of second to approve item three, H 2022-0058. Is there discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Burne, Perrow, Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borden, Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. The item is agreed to. Thank you very much. Next, we will move on to item four, which is public hearing for UDC text amendment ZOA 2022-0001. We will open this public hearing with staff comments from Mr. Parsons.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and get things pulled up here and get into the presentation here. Next, Mayor, members of the council. Next item on the agenda is the 2022 draft UDC changes. As you all know, we do meet with a UDC focus group throughout the year. We keep track of all of our changes, meet with that group, vet all of these changes so that when we come forward to you, we have pretty much vetted all the issues out and had consensus from a large body of people that make up that group. This application was heard by the Planning and zoning commission at the August 18 hearing in which the P&amp;Z commission did vote unanimously for the proposed changes, and there aren't any changes for you this evening from staff's recommended changes that are before you tonight. On the graphic before you this evening, I've highlighted some of the areas that I want to touch base on as far as the overall larger changes to the code. A lot of, some of these are off. Typically, we have cleanup. We either modify code that we hear from our applicants that don't work well or even our citizens, and then we add new changes to. and then we add new changes to try to mimic what's occurring in the valley or nationwide as trends and add new code changes for you to act on. And that's why you have twelve pages of code changes in front of you. Typically, that's not our intent. We like, but as you get a large group together, you tend to have broader and broader discussions on a whole host of different code changes. And that's what these, that's what's come about as part of this process. So I have to say, this is probably one of the most rewarding ones that I've worked on so far because I felt like we were very comprehensive. We thought everything out, made sure that we brought forth something that is enforceable and easily understandable. So first item, again, I've highlighted the ones that I want to touch base on. If there's anything that the mayor or council wants me to discuss tonight, I'm happy to do so as well. But again, these are some of the bigger ones that we talked about. So in our world and planning, I think this body is familiar with having, we get a lot of residential development. It's mostly single family or it's multifamily. There's nothing in between. And what we're starting to see more and more of and what we've realized is that in our code, we have a gaps, if you will, we have what we call home occupations and we have vertically integrated. So we have, we allow for people to operate businesses out of their home. And we allow people to build mixed use buildings. We have commercial on the first floor and residential above, but we had nothing in between. So we were having people that came come forward with some applications and they kind of skirted in between both of those uses. And we're like, we don't quite have that defined very well. So how do we want to bridge that gap? And so we came up with this strategy of having a tiered approach to our mixed use building. So you're going to have your home occupations, which is your single family home with two hundred square feet of your house and you're living and you're you're classified as a single family home. Then you're going to have this live work building, which is up to three thousand square feet with the bottom being commercial and residential above. And then you're going to have vertically integrated, which is that third and highest tier, which is your larger mixed use buildings like you're seeing under construction in downtown today. We felt that was a good approach to go and have that tiered approach like we do with a lot of our other residential developments. So again, we canvass the country and looking at different cities' codes and coordinate it with our building department on these standards. And so we feel like we have it nailed down pretty well on what home oc is, what live work will be and what vertically integrated will be moving forward. Then, yes.
Councilman Pearl.
Are we asking questions after each section or are we waiting until the end?
It's up to you how fluid you want to keep the conversation. If you want to wait till the end and go back, we can do that and just get through the presentation or we can have an open dialogue as I present your whatever your the.
Ask as we go. Ask as we go.
Okay, that's, that would be my preference. May I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. So two, two quick questions. Where did the fifteen hundred square foot max on the residential area come from? Is that like commonly accepted in other areas of the country? Is if you could share where that size came from? And then this doesn't specifically state the intention is that they would be two story and residential would be on one floor and commercial would be or non residential would be on another floor. It doesn't say it has to be two stories, but you had just mentioned one would be up and one would be down. So can it be a single level and still meet this criteria?
Mayor, members of the council, good, very good question. So part one of your question, where did the standards come from? It came from the international building code that we've adopted. So I worked with our building official and this is how they define it and we felt that was an appropriate purpose of that. To your second question, there is no two story requirement that I recall. But we'll, let's, let's wait until we get to the specific use standards and see if we have that criteria, but I'm not sure if it's in there or not. So we'll put a pin in that and then we'll come back to it as we get down to those specific use standards. This right now is just focusing on the definition and how it interacts with the various zoning districts. So you can see here, we've had to amend the schedule of use tables and all the different zones. So here we're adding it to the commercial zone, residential zoning districts, allowing it in some of the commercial districts as a principally permitted use or a conditional use. Obviously, we don't want them in industrial uses because they're not a compatible use. And then we're also allowing it in our traditional neighborhood districts. So for in this example, if they were to go in the Old Town Zone, any of these zones here under the traditional neighborhood, they would have to be two story minimum per the code. So there may be cases, but typically, yes, we do see them as two story. Here's one that Caleb presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I don't know if the mayor or city council is aware, but ACHD is in the process of essentially getting rid of bike lanes on Collector and Arturo roadways in lieu of having ten foot sidewalks along those roadways. So we're rather than getting people off the travel lanes and having wider sidewalks essentially. So we're trying to get ahead of the curve, so to speak, and then add that to our code and make it codified so we can support whatever changes they have forthcoming for their, their commission.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
Mayor Bill, on that, that point, when we have setbacks of, say, twenty-five feet or whatever is required depending on the street, then, then there's a ten foot sidewalk. Does that go into that or, because I thought we went from sidewalk to frontage. How does that work?
Mayor, council, it depends. So if it's a, sometimes when they widen the road, they may not have enough right of way and they have to attach the pathway. So in that particular case, the buffer would be measured from the back of the pathway. If it's a detached pathway, then it can be included as part of the buffer width. And then it would be measured from the curb or ultimate right of way location as anticipated by ACHD.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Yes, maybe just sticking with the, with the pathway bike lanes. Bill, I know in planning and zoning, there was a little bit of a discussion about, you know, electric scooters and you know, this, that's a topic this council's discussed at length before. I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm correct in, in how our code is set up, which is if you're, if you're going to go under twenty miles an hour or if you're, if it's, yeah, if it's under twenty miles an hour, we want them on the pathway. If it's over twenty miles an hour, we want them on the road. Am I remembering that correctly? I know that this came up at P and Z and there was going to be some discussion, I think, between the P and Z meeting and tonight. I just want to make sure that I'm correctly understanding what is the appropriate use of these electric scooters.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, I know Caleb, I remember that discussion. I watched the YouTube video as well. I don't, I think it's, I don't know if it's something in our code or if it's ACHD's code. I know Caleb was going to look into that and get back to everyone. So I don't, I don't have any definite answer for you this evening on that specific topic.
Yeah, I don't know if Mr. Mayor, I thought that that was only related to when we were doing the, when we had the program moving forward. I didn't know if that was something that we'd put in actual other language someplace else. I don't know if you know or the captain knows.
I, I believe you're correct and maybe Captain Kalan knows, but I think that was the conversation we were having when we were talking about scooters as a business opportunity in Meridian. I don't think we've codified that anywhere else that I'm aware of.
Mr. Mayor, I've got just one additional question in this section if it's, now's an appropriate time.
Yep, go ahead.
Thanks. So Bill, help me with this. The, the first one right out the gate, revising the definitions of adult entertainment. So I, I think I'm understanding what staff is wanting to achieve, which is to provide better clarity in the language. Here, I guess is the crux for me is I don't want to support any of this type of industry in Meridian. And I worry about us creating new definitions if we are creating a wider scope of which a business would be able to open in Meridian. And so help me understand the purpose of this. And if, if, if a council member's overall goal is to prevent these types of businesses from being in our community, what's the appropriate steps for us to take?
Mr. Mayor, I didn't know which bill you're asking, but I can answer that. Well, we cannot prohibit this type of business in the community. So they are allowed, but you can decide where they go. And that's basically what the UDC does. It determines where a business of this type can go. And so they are only in essentially industrial types of, of areas. So they aren't going to be in a residential neighborhood. But we, we cannot, we cannot prohibit them entirely. There's actual case law on that subject matter. So that's, this is just trying to align with what the state already defines as adult entertainment. And, and Councilman Perrot asked about alcohol service. And the state also defines what alcohol service can be done at an adult entertainment, which is why for a period of time, you saw some of these places where they didn't serve alcohol, they served alcohol next door. So people would go back and forth between the two businesses because they couldn't serve alcohol in the place where the, this, this activity was occurring. So, so to answer your question, we can't prohibit them. This is just aligning with what the state code already defines as what an adult entertainment business is. And we were just trying to eliminate conflict.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. And Bill.
So water, water conserving design standards, I think this body's heard a lot during the public testimony about water conservation. I know it's big. It's a big topic. Mayor had actually brought that up in the State of the City address this year as well. And so we're trying to incentivize that a little bit more, encourage applicants to look at doing that. And if you do that, then you get a, get a reduction in some of the requirements as far as the required planting materials and the width of the buffer is how we're going to incentivize that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you, Bill. Can you go into a little bit more detail about what, you know, how the applicant would be benefited by doing the water conservation versus not?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council will think about it. The, the one thing that even with the recent updates to our open space standards, we even require them to do less turf as part of those buffers along the street. We want people to do attractive enhanced buffers. We want people to have clear defined landscaping. It needs to be integrated in part of the overall design. And so the intent here is if you don't have to water, you don't have to, I don't know how many of you drive by a subdivision and you see sprinklers overspraying the sidewalks and going all over the street and they're not really hitting a hundred percent on landscape. In other jurisdictions, code enforcement would cite you for that because you're wasting water. We don't have that regulation here. So by you doing something that's water wise and eliminating the turf, you can actually do a drip system which uses a lot less water to, for those plants. And you put in more drought tolerant plants so that you have to water less. That's the benefit. And you get more boulders and rocks and those types of things like you see in, in the Southwest. Here's, here's one of all of our favorite topics, multifamily parking. I think all of you keep hearing about that too. And I can tell you, we've made a lot of strides and a lot of changes over the last couple of years to try to address some of those current concerns. And you still continue to hear those today. So I have two options for you. So when we were at planning and zoning, I had, and this was quite the topic of discussion with the focus group too. What is that perfect balance of parking or multifamily? And so based on those discussions, I went ahead and went back. We looked at staff, went back, looked at the parking standards, you know, we don't, if three bedroom, and a lot of times we hear concerns with the three bedroom units because we always presume there's going to be three roommates living together. So you're going to have three cars. So our initial blush was, you know what? All right, let's just make three and four bedroom units, three parking. And the group was fine with that, but we also discussed potentially just having a flat rate, like two per regardless of the bedroom count. And so usually I was anticipating Councilwoman Strater to be here to ask me, what does that ratio play out to be? So I did crunch some numbers for you to give you. So if we went through the two per unit option, you would, and I analyzed it against a three hundred unit apartment complex. So it's, I made up a development application and I gave three hundred units at two per unit. It came up with easy math, six hundred parking stalls. Half of those had to be covered and then one per ten dwelling units for the guest spaces. So you're having a total of six hundred and thirty parking stalls on that two per unit ratio. Now, on this plan that I have here, I gave, I assigned fifty studio apartments, a hundred and twenty-five one bedroom, one hundred and fifty-two bedroom and twenty-five three bedroom. And I calculated that for you and I added the guest parking. It came in at six hundred and forty-one. So you netted eleven more parking stalls with this proposal versus having an easy math of two per unit. Covered parking was actually less, two hundred and eighty-one covered versus three hundred with the two per. So it's, it's pretty much the same ratio, how, however you spin it. So our recommendation tonight, either you want the two per or you satisfied with what we have proposed in, in this exhibit tonight. So, and we can have that discussion now or afterwards as well. Curious as to what you guys think about that. And this kind of coincides with the next one too, which is vertically integrated. We kind of bumped up those standards a little bit. We were a little light on some of those, those standards. It was one, one per dwelling. And then we assess the different parking ratio for the commercial portion of the, the project.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you. So Bill, if I'm understanding you correctly, the first figure you gave six hundred and thirty is two spaces per unit plus guest parking. And the second figure you gave is using this chart here. Is that correct? So we currently have a requirement of three parking spaces per dwelling unit in the three and four bedroom apartments in multifamily? Is that what I'm reading?
No, Mayor, members of the council, we currently have for four plus bedrooms, it's three. For two and three bedrooms, it's two per.
So moving the three bedrooms to the four, but okay.
Yep, three and four units, correct.
In your conversations with many of the builders that are on the UDC committee, did they have concerns about the two covered parking spaces or garages with a three bedroom with actually accomplishing that?
Mayor, members of the council, there was no, there's really no discussion around the amount of cover parking. It really came down to the parking ratios and what is that right mix? And so, you know, we talked about the increase in rents. I think you've all heard of it. Increased rents means you mean more roommates, more people living in apartments, which it kind of makes the problem worse. And so obviously we can't fix everything, but this is our attempt to try to at least require a little bit more. Now with that caveat, you'll look at note number five there. What we're doing, no longer doing is we're not requiring commercial parking standards for the clubhouse if it's built in conjunction with the multifamily. A lot of the discussion came around, we, the group felt we solved the problem by adding the guest parking. Because by doing that, in this, in this particular instance, the one I just read to you, you get thirty more parking stalls. But therefore you've created overflow parking essentially for, for guests in that, or even if someone has parties or events in the complex, you've provided that additional parking. That's why they felt the ratio was right.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pearl.
So say along those lines that the apartment complex decided to label all of the spaces as guest spaces and the residents couldn't use them. They had to be left as visitor spaces. If, you know, let's say you have, in, in your scenario, there was a hundred and twenty-five one bedrooms. And let's say half of those have a couple in them that each have vehicles, but they only have one or one and a half spaces. Why not just require the three and four bedroom units to only have one covered space? And then there's a lot more open spaces for other units who have additional residents. Was there any conversation? I guess my concern is just like, it's really hard to get two carports or garages into a complex. So it may discourage developers from doing as many three bedroom units. And we don't want to do that because a lot more people are living in apartments as long term solutions to their housing. So I'm wondering, that's why I was asking that question because it creates less flexible parking in the complex as a whole. And, and that may, may or may not solve the issue.
Mayor, council, I, I think you bring up a valid point. We didn't really talk about that, but certainly it's within your purview to change that to one per if you want it to be consistent with other code or leave it two per the way it's written. So it sounds like my math is off a little bit because I probably should have required two, a little bit more cover parking. So it, I would, I thought it was one across the board. So my apologies. It is two for three bedroom units. So I, it's probably, it is slightly higher cover parking too with this ratio than the two per. But the standards, the, the option B that I have, it's two per with one, one being covered. So it is the same across the board.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
I, I'd be inclined to say, let's just leave it at one covered carport space or garage even for the three and four bedrooms, just so that, you know, a lot, a lot more complexes are requiring people to use the garage for parking and not storage. You're more likely to have somebody that tries to use that garage for storage if they're in a larger unit because they have more stuff usually. Yeah, I just, I don't know. I guess I have concerns about the developers actually being able to provide two covered. the developers actually being able to provide two covered carports, which takes up a lot more physical space than an open parking space. And then additional garages, which will take up more space and, and maybe make some of the properties smaller infill type of properties, less flexible. Because they're going to have to add that extra, those extra structures. Just a thought.
We'll move on to private streets or any, any other comments?
I just want to make sure, Bill, I understand the clarification that clubhouses are not subject to commercial parking standards. So we're treating them that they're not a standalone, so they don't have to meet commercial deals. But is that where they can put the guest spaces, one per 10 dwelling units? They can put them there. So there might not be any on-street parking in front of those types of things. But that number then can translate over to that clubhouse or fitness center, whatever it is. So I was just trying to mentally go through, because I know in some places, and is this only for multifamily development? Or is it for any residential development?
This is for multifamily. You can see there, there's a, a five here, underlying five here that went you to that note. So it's for multifamily.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, yeah. I, I think that will work. It's, it's one of those things you try to think it through and going, okay, what? Are there unintended consequences here by doing that? The, the number is still the number. It's just might be in a different location.
And keep in mind, a lot of the, a lot of the multifamily developments require conditional use permit. So we, we have those conversations when we meet with applicants during the pre-application meeting process. We let them know, you better have some, some healthy parking numbers. We're proud of parking here and we want you to include that on your site plan. Don't come in with the bare minimums because it usually doesn't go well. So the next topic that I wanted to share with you was private streets. I know we've had a handful of those and we've had some public comment on private streets as well. If you've had a chance to look at the public record from one of the applicants. And so if you recall, we had that Skybreak project in front of you a few years back. And we realized we had an issue with the private streets that it could only be in zones that did not require street frontage. R15, R40 zones to be specific. And so that's something that was on my, put on my list after that hearing. And so this is that attempt to say that you can take advantage of that in the other districts. I know one of the comments, looking at the public record from Mike Wardle specified us saying R2, R4. But if you look at the definition section of our code for residential districts, it calls out R2 all the way to R40. So we, we have it covered here. So this would open it up for others to apply for private streets in the other districts if they chose to. Now, keep in mind, we're not changing the applicability, or at least the purpose statement of the code. Really the intent of the private streets is not to get you out of doing public streets. It's, it's limited circumstances. We, the city really would prefer to have a public streets over private streets. But the option is there if they choose to.
That's important.
It's been something we've wrestled with though, and it's something that if we want to discourage and why do we want to allow it in code? Developer's going to apply. You can't say no. It gets all the way to council and that seems very late in the game for us to come in. The dimensions are different. Very late in the game for us to comment and say, no private streets. Why wouldn't we, for clarity purposes, continue to prohibit it in certain districts?
Again, that, that's your prerogative, but what we've, at least from the focus group, they felt that that satisfied the requirement. They're more concerned with it and they were concerned with this next section here about the number of dwelling units that could be served. Again, they felt 50 was, you wouldn't, if you only did 50 homes, you wouldn't have enough homeowners to have adequate cost to maintain the private road. So 100 was that threshold number. So that's why we went ahead and changed some of that, based on some of that feedback we had. Again, if council doesn't feel it's appropriate, we certainly don't have to implement the change. But the rationale was based on what we've heard from feedback from the UDC focus group. And, and their experience with doing gated communities. They felt that it should be allowed in other districts because why wouldn't you want to state lots, larger lots with gated communities? You see that pretty typically. And this kind of forces, in their opinion, it forced somebody to upzone a property that in order to get what they wanted. So we're trying to eliminate some of that confusion for, for not only applicants, but also for residents that come to the hearing, go R15, it's multifamily. No, it's R15 because they want gated street, private streets. It's kind of the purpose, the, the logic behind it.
That's one word. Somewhat we got into that issue actually on that. Pick a zone for the streets. So is there a reason, is there, over on the topic, any value in having a minimum number of lots in order to utilize private streets? Or is that an issue, the problem that doesn't come up? Cause that's the concern, right? If it is too small, actually, we know the costs that are coming down the road for those folks will be mad and come to the city in 17 years.
No harm, no foul, but yes, we don't typically, again, I don't know if someone would do that if there was a minimum. There are, there are some smaller gated communities, but they're, like you said, they're bigger homes on lots that were probably they can afford to take, keep up and maintain the, the roads.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you. Along those same lines, it seems to me every time we have a conversation about allowing for public streets, we have a conversation about parking on the streets and fire. So I'm wondering if fire department shared any thoughts with you on, on that? I, I agree. I don't want to increase the, or encourage the use of public streets. And because we always seem to go back to these two issues, fire trucks getting in there and parking. So it has, was there any consideration made? Of course, you know, the development and building community probably isn't going to want this limitation. But was there any consideration made of limiting the height of the units along the private streets in, in a, you know, PUD where only private streets exist? So they can only be single story because now we don't need to put a, take a ladder truck in there to, you know, if we have a fire issue or something along those lines.
So mayor, members of the council, Chief Barnes Journal was part of the focus group. He did chime in and gave me comments on this. He's looked at all these and signed off all this. So if you look there, it, the code requires them to get fire department sign off. So they're going to, he's going to make sure that he can adequately get in there and access that and make sure that it meets code. And that's, he's always part of those reviews and he's always quick to respond to applicants and let them know what they need. These are minimums. As you know, the minimum width of a private street is 24 feet. But again, the fire marshal has discretion to require more. And we can as well, the director can require more too. Specifically if someone wants to design it for on-street parking. Then we are going to get a wider street with parking on one side, and then we're going to have them sign the other side, no parking. So we know we can get emergency personnel in there. And currently the way the code reads now, you can only have up to 30 homes on a single access. And we're saying you can have up to 50 on one gate. So that's, that right there is, is a violation of the fire code. And that's why we're trying to clean up this section of code, let them go up to 100 and provide two accesses and two gates. I can tell you part of the, and then again, you can see here, the cul-de-sac length isn't consistent with code. So we changed that. And again, Chief Barnes Journal was all part of that and gave comments. So his comments have been taken into account and added to this section. If you had a chance to look at Mr. Wardle's comments, he said the same thing about allowing more homes there. And, and I've had very frank conversations with the development of community that at some point we want to look at our PUD standards. And really that's why we added that language change where it said, a greater number of dwellings may be approved with a planned unit development. That was its direct conversation with the development community that that's the correct avenue to get more like you did on the projects for direct Paramount Director and the one Lost Rapids next to Costco over there and Bainbridge North Development there. And that was all part of a PUD process and even Hill Century Farms where they got up to almost 200 units on private gated streets. So that's the appropriate avenue that they can seek if they want more than 100. Until we have a chance to redo the PUD standards. And we have been in meetings with some of the development community to talk about moving that forward ahead of SaaS timeline. I think the development community may want to bring that forward and talk about those changes with you.
Bill, was there any conversation about how the development committee wants these to function? You know, I, I think in, in Tuscany, we, we've got, you know, the, the R, the, the middle area right there where we've got private streets that are, you know, horizontally connecting between, you know, it meets the definition here. But they, they function as regular roads in that, through that area. And we, we also have the, the area that's up there, Eustick and Eagle. Do we want them to be gated? Do we want them to be driven by the public as a general means of maneuvering through an area? I guess that's, that's my basic question is how do we want private streets to function? Because it's on one hand, they are being paid for by other people. They're not taxpayer dollars. Was there any conversation or thought?
Mayor, council, the only conversation that came around getting adequate dues to pay for the main, long-term maintenance. And that's where that number came from. What you don't see here is the entire code section. So there's multiple ways that you can apply for a private street. So you can, in, in your example with Tuscany, they got approval of a private street without a gate because they front on open space, same you. The same thing with the, the project on Eagle Road, they front on muse those townhomes. So therefore they didn't need to gate it and they could still apply for a private street. But we have to go back to the purpose statement of the code and say, how do we want it to function? And we, and as staff, we don't want private streets. It's not good for the community. We want connectivity with surrounding developments. But in the example of Skybreak, where you have topography, you have a golf course. You don't have anything really developed around you for connectivity. In those limited circumstances, that seems to make some sense to do that on a case by case basis. And that's why this is set up the way it is. It's case by case. I don't want to think the council is overruled just because the director approves a private street. Ultimately you get to see the plat, you get to see the annexation request. And that's all part of the process. But as far as functioning, we want it to function, if you recall, Skybreak, we wanted to function like a public street. We at least want sidewalk on one side, or at least have logical pedestrian connection. So you can have some multimodal transportation happening where kids just aren't playing in the streets or neighbors have to walk in the street to, to enjoy the neighborhood. And I think you guys were very stern on that and you required them to, on that particular project, put in sidewalk on one street. Right now, the code does not require sidewalk on a private street for residential development. It only requires it in a commercial development on one side of this. Again, it's a big topic. It, it is something that's important to some of the developers, not necessarily all of them, as you know. Not everyone does private gate developments. Here's one I didn't highlight, but just wanted to let you all know, since there was some public testimony on the topic from Alyssa Bernard, talking about that Eustick area and Eagle, about nightclubs and restaurants and everything. Again, that's not really the purview tonight, but just bring your attention to that public testimony. But based on some of that feedback that we heard that transpired on a previous project out there, we felt it was prudent to change the parking regulations for drinking establishments. So we have mimicked that or changes to align with our restaurant parking standard. So it's one per 250 square feet of gross floor area for the building. Again, consistent with the restaurant standard. So we're trying to align code.
That's my home. Yeah, Bill, on that, how do we, how do we know that the changes happen? If it's a permitted use and they change. And it's, it's, I've seen in a strip mall where they went from an insurance agency to now there's a, a bar in there and restaurant type thing, hub. And boy, it changed dynamics greatly and added a tremendous amount of vehicles. So how, how do we know when that changes is made and how do we follow up and enforce that?
Well, there's a couple of things, mayor, members of the council, a couple of things. One is if they're changing occupancy, they have to go through a tenant improvement package to our, our building department. Hopefully they'll contact us first, but that's not always the case. A lot of times they'll submit a TI. I'll assign it to a planner and all of a sudden the planner will be like, no, this is a change of use. You need a process of planning application. And as part of that, they have to provide us a detailed parking ratio for the entire development. And then they have to tell us all the tenants in that building so that we can analyze that to make sure they're meeting the correct parking ratios. And if they do, we sign off. If not, we can't sign off on the permit. Next one is the secondary dwelling unit, and this has to do with attainable housing, of course, in our community. I think a lot of you've heard a hot topic in, in the valley about having affordable housing and different housing choices. So this is one where I looked at many different codes. I wanted to make sure that I got it right for the city of Meridian. And we've been seeing an increase in secondary dwelling units. And we're go, we're also going to be updating our software and our application process to allow people a separate permitting process through our SLA software and project docs, so that we can track these a little bit better in the system. So we know that someone is actually applying for an ADU is what it's, that we call it secondary dwelling, but others call it accessory dwelling units, all the same terminology. So currently we have one bedroom, 700 square feet, meet the parking regulations. What I'm proposing here is that we increase that to 900, allow an increase in bedrooms from one to two. Or it can't be larger than 50% of the, just the primary structure on the property. So we give them an or you get up to 900 square feet period or smaller if it, whatever's more restrictive. And then you still have to meet the parking standards of the code. So there's, there's no relief from the parking. So in this particular scenario, if someone wants to come in, apply for this, and they didn't meet the parking regulations, we can approve the permit. We'd have to deny it and they'd have to appeal to you and come ask you to, or submit for variance or something to that effect to get out of the parking ratio requirement. So we'll see how that plays out. I think most of the UDC focus group liked the changes here. The biggest thing is, is again, this was done in conjunction with our building department. And we did add and construct it in accordance with the adopted residential building code. So I don't want the council to think this would allow someone to move, put a manufactured home on the property or build a tiny home on a trailer and call it a secondary dwelling. That's not the intent here. The intent is it's, it's a building on a foundation connected to city services, meeting the definition of a dwelling and meeting all residential building codes. And that was quite a bit of a topic of discussion at Planning and Zoning Commission too. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Members of the council, I could also add on to what Bill just said. We also have a different section of code that doesn't allow manufactured homes, even on a foundation. So there, there's a specific code section that calls out manufactured homes separate from recreational vehicles. So you'd have to amend that code as well, which currently isn't part of this mix. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
So in item D, currently having code that the secondary dwelling unit may be located within the primary dwelling unit. Has there been any situation where somebody just adds a door to their basement and now their basement becomes an apartment? And they don't have to come in for a permit for that. They don't, you know, they're not adding a structure. They're not doing an addition to the property. So, and they're not changing the plumbing or the electrical, but now all of a sudden they've got four vehicles instead of two or whatnot. It is, is that, that seems to me like it would, could be a fairly common scenario where people are using an upstairs or downstairs and they're just adding an, an additional exit to the home.
Yeah. Mayor, members of the council, certainly that's happened. We're complaint driven. So if we don't know about it or if they don't know they need a permit, then yes, that could technically happen. And it has happened. We've had situations where people have tried to convert their basements, but they applied for a permit and then we'd had to stop them. Because one, we would classify that potentially a duplex or secondary dwelling. So if they were going to go exceed, what we've tried to do is create our application process, have the applicant explain what they're submitting. Is it a single family detached home? Is it a, is it a duplex? Is it a triplex? Is being more upfront on their application signal, so we know what they're actually applying for. But yes, we've had since instances where people add a door. Or you can even look in our GIS map and see people have two addresses for their property and never came to the city and did anything with us. But we don't know about that. It could have been done permitted years ago. I mean, it didn't even have a zoning ordinance in effect at the time. It could have been done in the seventies. That happened, you're always That happened. You're always going to have outliers like that. Certainly that can happen.
Just out of curiosity, Bill, are we actually seeing basements being built in Meridian these days?
Mayor members of the council, we see that more and more, actually. Stacy would know more. She looked at all the permits.
Is that happening in certain parts of our community because the water table as we grow into different parts, it becomes a little bit less of an issue? I'm just curious, as we're up on the bench, for example, you know, I look at the homes that are up there in the keep. I assume that they have the ability because they're, don't have the same water table.
Mayor, members of council, that's what we're seeing into. Yep, that's up in that higher area. They're getting those daylight basements, like you said, to take advantage of those views. And maybe they don't have as high groundwater.
Okay, so you're saying there's a chance? Okay, thank you.
There is a chance. Again, here's the specific use standards that go along with that. But you can see here, the, the earlier discussion you had Councilwoman Pro regarding the live work. There's nothing that says it has to be two stories, but certainly could add that if you want. Here's, here's an interesting change that we're changing some of our processes for commission and council, believe it or not. So as you know, we get a lot of alternative compliance requests. This body has seen a lot of development agreements come before you before conditional use permit is processed. And you've asked, why don't you do your CUP and then come back and see us? Or we want to see the CUP come back with the DA. And so we, we heard what you said and we've amended code, at least what we have on the books now does that. So one, the first change there is if someone submits alternative compliance concurrent with their conditional use permit, planning and zoning will be the decision-making body on it, not the director. And then part two of that is that you guys will be part when a conditional use comes forward and it's submitted concurrent with annexation, plat, alternative compliance, anything associated with that. Developmental modification, it's going to go to P and Z as a recommending body. And then you guys could act on the CUP and the DA at the same time as requested. And then the third part of this is that we're starting to see right away vacations happening with ACHD a little bit more. You guys have typically been a recommending body, but all the state code requires is that you provide the city provider a letter to them. So we're basically just aligning our ordinance with state code and no, no longer require that right away vacations come to you to take action on. ACHD will submit the application to staff and we can provide them with those comments as part of their application process. Rather than having to come before you to take that up with, with the council. But those are the, the three process changes that I have for you tonight as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
So just to be clear, on the conditional use category, it's not really changing what planning and zoning is doing currently because the alternative compliance would go to the director and then they would hear the CUP. So that's their, their role is not changing at all. It's just when I see you, it's, it's the timing of everything. So the CUP has to come concurrently with these other types of applications, not and, you know, an MDA and then a CUP goes to planning and zoning, but doesn't ever come to council. That's the whole purpose of it.
Correct. Mayor, members of the council, that was the intent here. If you recall, we had that project. They were trying to do two or three drive-throughs on one property and you guys denied that and like, well, we don't know if this works or not. We need to know if the CUP may analyze that with the CUP to see if we can approve this. So you didn't feel comfortable acting on that DA and you told them, go back and bring it all forward together. And so during the pre-application meeting process, I heard you very loud and clear on that. And I think you've said that on a couple of occasions on some of the DA mods that you've processed recently. And so we've been encouraging applicants to follow that process before we've got it codified, just to make sure that we're, we get that information to you is that you want CUPs to come to you when they're submitted concurrently with a DA mod. Right now, what we've been trying, what we've done is the DA mod would come to you and then two weeks later, the P and Z is acting on the CUP so that all the timing aligns for the developer. And we found out that that might always work for the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
So process question, refresh my memory if, let's see, there was an application a while ago over by Fested Eddies on Eagle where there was a section that was going to be multifamily and they just, they just held it out as one individual lot. And then they, they were going to go ahead and develop all of the single family in the townhomes. And then later down the road, they were going to do a CUP for the multifamily. And that's, you're not saying that they have to bring the CUP with the annexation. You're saying that they can come, they can do the CUP at a later time in that situation where they've set aside a lot for the multifamily and they're going to do it later. Do they have to do a DA modification to, do they have to do a DA modification in the, in that kind of situation?
Mayor, members of the council, it depends. It depends on how we draft the contract. So in that particular case of that project, you acted on a concept plan with the, with the annexation. So if they come forward with a CUP that's consistent with the DA and that concept plan of the DA, no, it's not coming to you. It's going to go to P and Z and they're going to act on the conditional use permit. If something in the contract, the DA said, come back with a detailed CPUP and amend the DA for multifamily, then yes. And at then that particular scenario, they would have to do the CUP and the DA mod concurrently. So then P and Z would become the recommending body on the CU. And you guys will become the decision-making body on the DA and the conditional use permit. We're, we've got you covered either way unless council doesn't want to look at CUPs. And let the code kind of, that's what the code did and act, it empowers this, the P and Z to approve conditional use permits.
Anything else, Bill? Or so councils, there's.
Yeah, I think that's about, I didn't know if council had any more discussions on those particular procedural changes, but if not, you know, I, I've kind of highlighted everything that I wanted to bring up to you this evening. Again, public record had a couple pieces of testimony from Mike Wardle and Melissa Bernard. Highlighted on what they were concerned with. So at this point, I think we've had a pretty good, robust discussion. I'll just stand for any questions. And just ask, you know, again, let's think about multifamily, how you parking, going back to that topic. Do you like what I have currently? Do you want to, you want me to pull up option B so you can see it before you take any action on that? And then also the carport discussion, whether or not requiring two car, car parks per three and four bedrooms or one. With that, I'll stand for any additional questions.
Council, any initial questions for Bill at this time or? Mr. Mayor. See if our one person in the audience wants to provide testimony. Is there anybody from the public that'd like to provide testimony on these items of course this evening? And see who got online and Kyle's still the only one online. So council, your questions for Bill? Or discussion amongst yourself.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Just a comment. Honestly, you know, it's amazing what, what has to happen and occur in the to, for us to get to this point. There's a lot of discussion that we run into different bugaboos during applications to make us think and and it's this type of process that really puts council and finding and zoning, other decision-making bodies in a position to just make it easier and more consistent for the applicant. So I think you guys did a great job on this. Obviously there's a lot of thought put into it and big shout out to your committee that, that really spent a lot of time thinking this over and, and going over it multiple times in order to come up with an end product that makes sense for all of us. So at the end of the day, it's consistency and that's what we do best. All those who are, who participated in that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Gordon.
My, my thoughts were kind of similar to that. I mean, I, part of a big lift like this is the process utilized and we really focused on having that group provide the input, the discussion that led us here. So knowing none of these decisions and recommendations are from any one particular focus area or group. That collaboration's really important. We will perpetually tweak this. We really will. That's the design. I can come in seeking any changes in what was presented and I didn't hear anything that's even necessitated, understanding the work probably starts again tomorrow for the next round. I'm comfortable with it and super proud of the group effort.
Council, anyone else? Any questions or comments or things to revisit?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Just as Bill stated, really for me, the only outstanding thing would be just discussing if there's a requirement for two, should be a requirement for two carports and or two garages or combination in this multifamily section. You know, it doesn't sound like the UDC committee discussed that specifically. And I wonder if it just didn't quite click, you know, because those in the committees, there's so much detail to discuss and you don't always get to everything. So that's something that I would like to see maybe reviewed a little more unless unless council wants to just agree to the one one covered requirement. But I, I do have concern that they will, might be, we're already seeing a lot fewer three, three bedrooms as a ratio to the studios and the one bedrooms than we were even, you know, two or three years ago. We're fitting more studios and one bedrooms in because you can, you can fit more units into one structure. And it doesn't mean there's fewer cars though, just because we put a studio or a one bedroom in there necessarily, you know.
Councilman Gordon.
Respond to that point. Would it, would a middle ground be perhaps having, you know, three units allow one uncovered carport or garage, but four units still require two? Does that kind of meet in the middle a little bit and still encourage a three bedroom unit, but the four truly is a more intense? That seems, makes good sense to me, too. Aditable?
Mayor, members of council, that's doable.
Just because I'm intellectually curious, why do we, is there a reason why there's one covered, one required covered to begin with? Was that a standard that was put in 50 years ago in the city or recently or otherwise? I just don't know why, why there's even a requirement for any covered parking.
Mayor, members of the council, it's a good question. It was not, not part of the original UDC focus group on why we required covered parking. I think a lot of times I think it's just probably keep heat gain down or give people some options because we do have inclement weather. So it's nice to have that and not get snow on people's vehicles and give people options.
I think it's a great amenity to have. I just don't know why there's a requirement for it to exist because you would think that people would want it as compared to a requirement. I was just curious. I didn't know where, if anyone knew how or why it existed. And I don't, I try to think around the valley about places that don't have them and nothing comes to my mind. I just didn't know if it's just an expected standard amongst all development that you will have covered parking. Just curious. The only other thing that kind of caught my attention that's not in here, I don't know if it belongs in here, but you mentioned it, Bill. So blame it on you was that we don't require sidewalks on one side of private roads. Is that something that maybe would be in the next iteration of conversation with UDC? I'm just curious if there's a reason why it should or shouldn't. And you know, if they're gated, is it not required? But if they're accessible by the general cars, then they should be required. I just curious if that's and again, blame yourself. You mentioned it.
Mayor, members of the council, certainly we can take the approach to require it now. I mean, we're, we're here talking about code changes. So and we're talking about private street standards. If you want to include that, you can include that now and just say, we can amend the code to say, rather than sidewalk is on one side if the commercial in it, we can just say it's required in the residential district too. Or you can say you want it on both sides of the street. Or we can add it to the list and talk about it with the focus group. I don't want you to have a knee jerk reaction either just because I brought something up. It's, it's good to route that to the group and get some feedback too. I don't want to undermine that process because it is valuable. As you ask a planner, I remember Alan, he's he was very stern on pushing for that sidewalk. He didn't care if it was a private street. He just wanted to make sure there's at least some walkability to it and had its, had sidewalk on one side of the road and that's where he landed when he presented the project to you on that particular issue. I know in other, for example, in the Brighton developments where it has occurred, there's been sidewalks along the street too to enhance that. To me, it makes some sense, but of course there's always costs involved.
Whether council wants to consider it now, I would, I'd at least put it on a list in the future if they don't want to do it now. Because they can always require if it's, they deem it necessary or prudent during each development application. If it comes up, but at least that way it can be discussed in the future with the group. That's at least what I would put on the list for future. Because I can see, I do understand the reasons why. Personally, I don't know if I ever would, but I, I'd be open to the conversation at least personally. But if you can access it generally without any restrictions, like in Tuscany, where you drive through it, I think that's a scenario where sidewalk would make sense. But I'm trying to think, I don't know if they do have sidewalk there. I'm going to go investigate that on my way home because I'm just curious now.
Mayor, members of council, I think they have the sidewalk in the Mew. May not have it. They may not have a sidewalk on that one side, but if it's public streets, they should have had.
Just the private, the private side. I'm trying to think if they do, it's not much of a sidewalk, maybe a three foot sidewalk.
Well, not to belabor the discussion a little bit because I think you bring up some valid points, but the other option is when there's a certain number of homes, should sidewalks be required? If you have 10 homes, sidewalks make sense. Maybe not. They're bigger lots. Maybe they want that 20 foot wide road or 24 foot wide road. You don't need it as much, but when we're getting to 100, 100 homes, it makes some sense to have some sidewalk. So it's kind of that economy of scale thing, right? What that magical number is, I don't know at this point, but that, I'm looking forward to the discussion. I'll definitely take some notes and, and determine how to move forward with that change.
Well, there's two other subdivisions that really come to mind of where this has played out in the past and has become an issue. Kentucky Ridge and Dunwoody Court. Both of those, well, I know that wasn't the application, but that was the road where you're going to build onto the back of a private road or a county's road that never had sidewalks required. And you got to go back and figure out how to reapply it so that you create that standard moving forward. And I don't know, even if it's a secondary access to, you know, through a private street to, to be gained. When you just don't require anything. Again, future UDC conversation from sipping that into the list. Councilboard.
Are there any other questions from council on this topic? And I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing on the UDC text amendment, ZOA 2022 0001.
Second motion. Have a motion second to close the public hearing, is there any discussion? If not, on favor six five, I say aye. I have opposed name. Yes, have it and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Good discussion, great work. And with, with the one adjustment that we talked about with three versus four units in the multifamily, the covered parking that Councilwoman Pro had addressed. That one edit, I'll make a motion that we approve this text amendment, 2022 0001 as amended in the September 27 hearing, otherwise as presented by staff.
Second, the motion. I have a motion second. Is there discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm hoping.
Just real quick, I pondered it and since I'm, I feel some responsibility as the oldest member of the council up here to talk about the covered parking and this, this harkens back to the old days, you know, when the covered wagons. talk about the covered parking and this, this harkens back to the old days, you know, when the covered wagons came out, they were that, they were covered. And they had canvas on top. Well, as they came to the community and they still use the cover wagon, but they started using more freight wagons. And those freight wagons weren't covered. So the canvas makers required that at least every, for every freight wagon, there had to be one covered wagon. So that's just carried on since then. So I, I hope you enjoy that history lesson.
Can Kenny, does, do you concur?
As I say, there's only one other person here that would know that, it's Kenny Bowers.
Is there further discussion on the motion? Councilman, Mr. Mary.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just so you understand, you'll get, you'll see this one more time. We'll work with planning to put it into the final form of the code and then you'll get it on a future agenda, so.
Then with that, ask the court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Burnt, Perro, Cavanagh. Wharton.
Hi.
Hi. Eyes, motion carries, the aim is great too. Thank you, Bill, and the entire team. I know it was a group effort to make this happen, give them our thanks and I look forward to the next round of conversations. But you're not done for the night, so with that, let's move on to the item five, which is the public hearing for the existing conditions report, 2022 CPAT, H222-0049. Well, this public hearing, we'll staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Last item on the agenda, at least for planning applications, is the existing conditions report, 2022. So I am presenting this on behalf of Brian McClure and Caleb Hood, the Long Range Division. They did excellent work, I have to commend them for all the hard work that they did too. But all of you, as, as you may know, the existing condition report is, is an addendum to the comprehensive plan. So it's part one of a part two or two documents, one is the policies and conditions and the other ones are policies and the guidelines or a division of the community, the other one is the existing conditions report, which tells us where we've been over the last several years. In 2000, you know, right now, when we updated the comprehensive plan in 19, we adopted the 2017 version as part of that. We didn't, and step two was to come back at some point and update this document to be that companion document. I can tell you back in 18, we did amend the ECR. So that was the last update to this particular document. I handed you all out a flyer that Brian actually put together. It'll kind of coincide with the slideshow presentation that I have. I won't go into all the details that Brian put into it, but at least wanted to get that in front of you just to blow your mind on what we've done over the last 20 years in Meridian. I mean, it is just amazing how much this community has grown since 2012, 2000, unreal. And the work that Brian did was phenomenal. So really, the, the purpose of this meeting tonight or our discussion is one to basically adopt the new existing conditions report. And this particular slide shows you what, what needs to happen. So page C needs to just change, strike out 2017, include 2022, and the same thing for pages one through three. It's, it's really that simple, just adopting this new ECR. Now, this is where Brian should be here stealing all the thunder, but I'll go ahead and just try to share some quick numbers with you here and and coincide with you. So you can see here, as of January 2022, this is what our population's estimated at. So just think that's eight months ago, nine months ago, we probably exceeded more than that by, at this point. You can see the population changed between 2000, 2010 and 2020. So we've consistently been having 20, 20, 2000 was a large increase, 25,000 people moved here between 1990 and 2000. 40,000 between 2000, 2010, and 2010 to 2020, 42,000 people in Meridian. That's, that's amazing. So you can see Brian's put, put together this graphic here, that's a 36% increase between two, before 2010 and now. That's, that's a tremendous amount of growth, as you all know, you hear it all the time at the public hearing process. You can see that we, we are continuing to age in our communities. And Brian shared that with all of you as well. Education. You can see 90, 96% of the population is, is having high school diplomacy, or high school diplomas. And then you can see, I think one thing to note that Brian's noted out is the increase in the amount of females that have gotten higher education in our community. 41%, that's a huge increase there. Next item is unemployment, I know this is, is important to all of us and you can see how many jobs we added over the last 10 years. So you can see our unemployment trends here, they were high probably because of the pandemic. And then you can see we were adridged out over the last 10 years, 3.7%. I think what's interesting on this graph is the percentage of jobs between 30 and 54, how that's gone down. And then Brian's broke down the industry that are, that are occurring and what's increased over the last few years here as well. So you can see health care is a large employer in the community. Retail, of course, you see the increase in that. Construction has increased, not, no surprise given the amount of development we have occurring in the, in the city. I don't know what all other represents, but that's a pretty large segment as well. Here's our average household size and average family size. So they have decreased, but the average family size has increased. Housing, this is a big topic again, you can see here that we're starting to get a more balanced approach between our multifamily and our, our single family. It's changed quite a bit from 8% to 18%. So you, you guys know that because you hear about all the growth. And you can see we've prevented 20,000 new units in the last decade, 20,000. And then this is where the attainable, affordable housing component comes in. You can see that 43% of the renters are paying more than 30% of their income towards rent. And 22% of homeowners are paying more than 30% towards their house payment. Poverty statistics, you can see that here as well. It's good to see it decreasing although slightly. And so concluding my presentation, I'll just basically go back to that third slide. Propose those changes before you on what we need, strike out underlying the 2017 date and add the new 2022 date. With that, I'll conclude my presentation and stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Couple of questions, so on the number of new jobs that were added, it says total new Meridian family wage jobs. What is the wage that then constitutes the difference between a new job and a new family wage job? Is there an amount that that's based off of?
Councilwoman Perrow, I, I don't have the answer for you on that. I don't know if anyone else up there under, knows what that threshold is or not in economic, for family wage jobs.
Is that something the Department of Labor, like who defines that?
I wish I had an answer for you, I don't, I apologize, but I can get you one and then circle back with you.
Yeah, I can't say what number they're using. At one point in time, we were trying to find family wage as being able to, you know, use the price of a home and a wage that allowed you to meet the median price of a home payment, I think at the 40% of your income level. But obviously with the prices of homes changing and I can't say where that ended up. Or what was it? Yes, Councilman Cavanagh.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't mean to interrupt. I, I think this is a really great question, it did come up in planning and zoning and, and Brian shared the statistic he used is data from the American Community Survey data, which pings it at $3,333 a month. I, I maybe take a little bit of exception with that number, but at least for council's benefit, that is the basis that Brian used.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanagh.
I think those are the surveys that the Census Bureau sends out to collect all their data on the off years. Yeah. One more quick question, Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Councilwoman Pro.
The housing expenditure section, the incomes, the percentage of incomes, is that, is that information that's from the Census Bureau? From the, the last census? And how do they exactly know what the incomes of the renters are?
Mayor, members of the council, I, I don't have an answer for that question either, I apologize.
That's okay.
We can get you an answer.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Maybe a comment, then a question for you, Bill. But first, appreciate this report every time it's updated. I know Brian's not there, but this and the, or our citizen survey that we talked about two weeks ago, for me, are two of the most important documents that I use to refer when I'm making decisions or kind of thinking about our community. So I appreciate the work that, that goes into this. My, my question is about the mix between multifamily and single family. And certainly anytime a new annexation comes to Meridian, there's always some occasional conflict. And that always seems to be accelerated when it's multifamily. And from your perspective as kind of a subject matter expert, what is the right mix? Are we, are we bringing in too much multifamily right now? Are bringing in too much compared to the single family? Is there a healthy mix that the department likes to kind of see in a, in a hypothetical world?
Mayor, members of the council. I'm sure it varies for every place that you live. I've had discussions with Brian over the years about what that healthy mix is and I think we're closer to that, typically we like to see one to four.
Okay.
But if you recall, we, our comp plan also includes, includes a diversity of housing. So it doesn't always have to be just multifamily and single family. We want to make sure that it's, it's diverse period, not just lopsided one way or the other. And that's typically, that's what we've been seeing, it's either single detached homes or these larger multifamily developments, because that's what the market seems to be. The developer seems to be chasing the market to some degree. They keep getting data that tells them that there's a need for these, this housing and not potentially for the other ones. But that doesn't mean when we have conversations with a developer or an applicant that we're not pushing for that higher diversity or greater diversity in developments.
Right.
But I can tell you what I've seen over the last, although you guys are what our, our comp plan or what we usually stay silent on is whether or not it's owner occupied or rental units. We don't get in, that's not the purview of us in our, in our world. We, we just make sure that here's the comp plan and the code. And what I've been seeing recently is we've got a lot of townhome developments out there, but because there's market for rent, they're building the townhomes and renting the townhomes versus selling them as ownership. So that, that gives me some concern because we're hoping to get that diversity in homeownership and rentals in the community. And then if we keep kind of catering to one or the other, it kind of skews the numbers a little bit. But to get back to your point, I mean, again, my understanding of having conversation with Brian, again, one to four ratio seems to be healthy for a community.
Mr. Mayor, a quick follow up for me?
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thanks, Mayor. Bill, is that something that, you know, the planning department is kind of tracking on an ongoing basis, on an annual basis? Is it more of a, it's kind of a gut level assumption kind of based on what you've seen? Or how is the department kind of keeping tabs on that, on that mix?
Yeah, we, we certainly are doing a better job of that now. So we've, over the last couple of years, we've leveraged our GIS system, which is our mapping very heavily, and you guys get all of the dashboard numbers. So we have an internal tool that we can use based on all the permit activity where we could run that report and have a handle on what's, what's being permitted and all that activity. So we can gauge that a little bit more accurate, or we can actually gauge it with certain accuracy. You never get 100% accurate, but at least we can tell that story a little bit more. And that's what Brian did all of this work here to share that with you because he was able to pull some of that data and, and share that and update these numbers for you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
Bill, to that end, it's interesting that you stated that, that the developers are trying to meet market demands. And in my experience, that hasn't been as much the case as it is that that the residents are having to just be comfortable or, or adjust to what builders are willing to build. Not so much that they're, it's, I don't think that the, the consumer demand is what's driving what's being built. I think it is, it's costing more for land and they're needing to do greater density for to make up the difference in the land cost. So they are building denser products, but they get less per unit in that, in that regard from a profit standpoint. So, and then the public then has fewer options, like you were stating. And so the public's just having to get, to, to just live in what they can find because there's been such a shortage. And so personally, I think that it's really being driven more by factors outside of both groups. You know, there, there's just not a lot of control in either group, what is happening. It's more just like what can we do because there's such a desperate need for inventory? Just wanted to throw that out there because I wish it would be, I wish it was a situation where, you know, developers could just say, hey, this, you know, there's a, the consumers would like this kind of product and we're going to build it. It's more like, well, the consumer has to buy what they can find because there isn't availability, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman.
I, I think Councilwoman Pro is correct, you know, it's, everyone is adjusting to the market. And, you know, a family wants to buy a home and they want a single family home and want to have their, you know, land and a nice yard and those types of things for the dog to run around. But as a developer is adjusting to the market because they can't, it's so costly. They want to adjust to the market and make sure they can offer homes for people to buy. But to keep it within the range that people can afford, they are having to adjust and make smaller lots and tall skinnies and all these different products that we see. So, you know, I, I'm always of careful to make sure that while we want to see a diversity of housing, and I think that's good because there's a lot of different demand out there and different, different needs and desires. But at the same time, we have to make sure we don't try to do something that the market's not going to have happen. Then nothing's going to happen, just because we, we don't control the market. And, and to me, I've said this before, we don't have skin in the game. I mean, from a standpoint of investing money into the system and seeing a return, we, we do to some degree when it comes back to us in form of taxes. But how the market moves forward is going to be what the consumers want, what they can afford, what the builders can do for that affordability ratio. And so it, it's kind of, we all kind of have to do a dance here to make sure our goals are met. But at the same time, knowing what the market's doing and how people are adjusting to that. And, and ultimately, sometimes I, I think we just, we might get too locked into our goals as opposed to, well, this is what the market's doing and this is the demand that's out there. Because we won't be able to change that, it, it is what the market is. So just always something I want to be cognizant of and, and are we trying to ask the market to do something that it's not going to do? Because it's, it's bigger than any, any one entity out there, whether developers, government or, or consumers. So some, just my two cents on that.
And maybe you just said one thing, I don't know if we've gone through and, and done this, but much of what's yet to be annexed into the future and developed in the, in the southwest part of our community does not have a lot of multifamily zoned for it. You know, we just happen, we happen to be in the parts of our community right now where development is occurring, where multifamily is envisioned and part of the plan. I'm not going to say, I, I could not even guess how many acres of land is currently still out there available for multifamily and how many units that that could potentially or not. or not produce. But I, I think if I looked at the city as a whole, you know, overall our numbers are probably going to skew more towards single family long-term. And this will go a little bit further that direction unless the future council decides to make a different determination about, you know, the zoning and comp plans in those areas and modify those ratios. But a large area of southwest Meridian does not have multifamily in it. And that's probably 50% of our to be developed land in the future. It's always a snapshot in time to a certain extent. Just of observation, no other value there. Counsel, any additional questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I just want to say thank you, Bill and Brian and Caleb for putting together this fantastic A lot easier than reading all 126 pages of the report. And hopefully this will get posted on our website because it's fantastic. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Do we have any in the audience that'd like to provide testimony on this item or online? See no one raising their hands. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Move that we close the public hearing for H 2022 dash 0049.
Second.
Have a motion second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the ayes have it, the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I promise I won't talk about covered wagons now. I, after considering all staff applicant public testimony, a move to approve file number H 2022 dash 0049 is presented the staff report for the hearing date of September 27th, 2022.
Second that motion.
Have a motion a second to approve item H 2022 dash 0049. Is there discussion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Burnt, Perrow, Cavaner, Horton, Hoagland.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries. Thank you, Bill, and please give Brian and Caleb, but maybe Brian the congratulations next time we see him in a couple of months. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is item six, which is ordinance number 22 dash 1995. Ask the court to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance amending Meridian City Code Section 632A and 632A6 regarding qualifying behavior for disorderly conduct and adding Meridian City Code Section 632C regarding citation signature for disorderly conduct, repealing any conflicting ordinances and providing an effective date.
Thank you, counsel. You've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there a made like a readiness in entirety? Mr. Mary.
Mr. Members of the council, I just wanted to kind of go back for one second. This ordinance, if you recall, we had a conversation a few months ago with Lieutenant Caldwell regarding this desire for downtown in trying to deal with a lot of the problems we were having with the various bars and restaurants downtown. That element of that ordinance had alcohol or intoxication as an element. There, our newest deputy attorney, Tisha Murray, has done some research for us, found some case law that doesn't allow us to use that as a condition in itself. But the behavior is, is the conduct that's, is being prohibited here. And so that's what it's focused on is the conduct of the individual, not the condition of the individual. But the, also the key factor, which was the officer could cite the person based on their observation rather than a third party. That was the biggest problem in enforcing disturbing the peace or disorderly conduct is you had to have a complaint and oftentimes people don't want to do that. So the officer observes behavior, the officer conditions citation or, or the arrest on their own observation and not somebody else having to sign a citizen's arrest. So just a few minor tweaks from the last discussion. I just want to make sure that was on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mary. Are we trying to get this in place and time for the Saturday's events and does boxing apply?
So, Mr. Mayor, it has to still be published. So it won't be published before this weekend, so it won't be in effect yet.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I have a question about that. So if, what, what, is there a standard that the, word standard is not the word, are there criteria that the officers need to meet in order to issue that citation? Like you might, we have, it's not common, but there are situations where somebody might have low blood sugar or have other physical issues that display, the behavior displays like they might be intoxicated, but they're not. So is there, is there some proof that's required by the officer to make that arrest?
So yeah, so Mr. Members of the council, Councilman Pro, if, if you look at the ordinance itself, it basically says any person shall conduct himself or herself in a violent, noisy or rightous manner. So it's looking at the conduct of individual of what they're doing. Now, if they have a defense, after they've cited or they go to court, they get arrested or whatever, their defense is I was having a medical reaction to something. That's certainly a affirmative defense they can assert in the council. The prosecutor can decide, okay, I'm not going to hold them accountable for this behavior that was observed because their condition was beyond their control. But that's a defense they'd have to assert that they were doing that because the officer's not going to know if they're acting violently towards another person. They're not going to know that there's a reason for it beyond that. So again, it's not trying to deal with alcohol intoxication, it's dealing with behavior.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I move that we approve ordinance number 22 dash 1995 with a suspension of rules.
Second the motion.
Have motion a second to prove the ordinance number 22 1995 under suspension of the rules. Is there any discussion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Burnt, Perrow, Cavaner, Horton, Hoagland.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries. The ayes have it. Next item up is item seven, which is ordinance number 22 dash 1996. Ask the court to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's ordinance 19, sorry, an ordinance amended. I'm going to start over. Ordinance 22 1996, an ordinance annexing the west half of the Northwest one quarter of Section 15 Township 3 North, Range 1 West Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. More particularly described in Exhibit A, rezoning 0.98 acres of such real property from RUT, rural urban transition to R15 medium high density residential zoning district, directing city staff to alter all use scenario maps as well as the official zoning maps and all official maps depicting the boundaries and the zoning districts of the city of Meridian in accordance with this ordinance, providing, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, repealing conflicting ordinances and providing an effective date.
Thank you, counsel. You've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there a made like a readiness in entirety? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
So none of these show that there's a waiver of the reading rules necessary. So do we need to make that suspension on these? It's typically within the description.
Mr. Mary.
So, Mr. Members of the council, so, I mean, you may not have been here that night, Councilwoman Perrow, some of those are leftovers and old ordinances. They're not required by statute. So we can pass an ordinance whether that language is in there or not.
Oh, great. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I move that we approve ordinance number 22 dash 1996.
Second the motion.
Have a motion a second to prove orders number 22 dash 1996. Is there any discussion? If not, court call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Burnt, Perrow, Cavaner, Horton, Hoagland.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries and the ordinance is agreed to. Next time up is number eight, which is order number 22 dash 1997. Ask the court to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance annexing the east half of Section 16 Township 3 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. More particularly described in Exhibit A, rezoning 125.59 acres of such real property from RUT, rural urban transition to IL Light Industrial Zoning District, directing city staff to alter all use scenario maps as well as the official zoning maps and all official maps depicting the boundaries and of the zoning districts of the city of Meridian in accordance with the ordinance, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, repealing conflicting ordinances and providing an effective date.
Thank you, counsel. You've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there a made like a readiness in entirety? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I move that we approve ordinance number 22 dash 1997.
Second the motion.
Have a motion a second to prove orders number 22 dash 1997. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Burnt, Perrow, Cavaner, Horton, Hoagland.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries and the ordinance is agreed to. Counsel, anything on our future meeting topics or do I have a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the ayes have it, we are adjourned.